Frank Arriola.
Here.
Carlo Julio Guerrero. Richard Sablon. Rose Leo, here. Eloy Harum.
Here.
Paris Blas, here. Nina Korn.
Good.
Dr. Mario Pala, here. Kenneth Botista.
Here.
Simone Ballinger, here. Attorney Rebecca Reisen, here. Okay, we're good.
Change per settle the mission statement. Guam Community College is the leader in career and technical workforce development. Part of the highest quality student center education. I'm training from Micronesia. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes? Not been a motion to approve. So move, can you get a second?
Second.
Okay. I've read through, I don't have any recommendation for changes, so just let me know if there's any changes that need to be made. Would you okay?
Yeah, I'm good. I don't have any changes.
Okay, if no objection, minutes are approved. Communications, any requests?
No communications.
Public discussion?
No request for public discussion.
Okay, thank you. Reports, can you present your reports?
Sure, starting off with the financial status of the college. The college has received to date nine point nine one two four nine one million dollars. Broken down into seven million eight ninety-six, seven fifty-two from the general fund. Approximately one point nine from MFA, thirty-six thousand zero sixteen for post. And the first generation trust of approximately hundred thousand dollars. Based on the allotment schedule and the cash received, the college has received eighty-four percent of the billed amount. And we continue to receive monthly allotment, I mean weekly allotment from the Department of Administration.
Okay.
Moving on to other activities that have been happening here on campus. Couple of things. The employees on campus have participated in FERBA training. And this is important because of the confidentiality of student records for all the departments that handle student information. We do have some updates to other professional development activities. So with the foundation board, BP Rod and I attended the fiduciary essentials trainings sponsored by UPEP. Which is needed, one for my A.I.M. certification, but for BP Rod as a steward of fiscal resources here on campus. And then various administrators on the campus have attended training. One particularly deals with financial aid, return to Title IV. And so these are for students who are preliminarily eligible for Title IV. And then ultimately not either funding is not. Like their checks are not cashed, and so we have to return the money if they're not awarded. Or if there's a drop in their enrollment. Also, distance education guidelines that was sponsored by ACCJC. We do attend the Iser training. Folks in HR attended the Sherman Central harassment training. And then the HR also conducted the new employee orientation that was held on March ninth. We have a series of new employees coming in to the campus. And there's some rotations from departments into from the LTA status into permanent status. And so we'll probably be doing a little bit more new employee orientation in the upcoming months. Because we have some active recruitment going on. Including faculty recruitment for the next academic year. So with McRell, which has the grant for the regional education left. Has reorganized or restructured their governing board. So as the representative for the college Dean Pilar now. Because of her expertise in career and technical education, now sits on the Rell board. And so she'll provide her expertise to that group, which is consistent of not just representatives from Guam. But throughout Micronesia, including all the federated states, allow Americans, some Hawaii side camp in the Marshall Islands. So at the end of the month, which was March thirty-first, although it was released a couple of days later. The college of course, twenty-one years consecutive years of clean audits. And this is really a collective, you know, collective effort from everybody here on campus. And this year, I really wanted to highlight the three individuals in the finance office that have been here for all twenty-one of those years. Charleston Nicholas, Carol Romero, and Linda Torres. And so for as long as we've had clean audits, I mean, I remember the days when the college was inauditable in the nineties. And they brought in a team to reconstruct the financial statements of the college. And so these three ladies were here since we've received or obtained our very first clean audit. And so we kind of wanted to highlight that this year.
Without further ado, you could share also on all your trips, she also reports them. And so that's very key whenever funding is requested for, so having a clean audit for twenty-one years is very impressive.
Yeah, true.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then there's a couple of other things coming up. We're continuing to work, Dr. Mike's continuing to work on articulation agreements with the university. As is our faculty representative, Ms. Simone, with the University of Guam. And so those continue to move forward.
What areas on which?
So Dean Mike is working on the, or working on the articulation for anatomy and physiology. I believe those are two areas on the science. And then we've got two math courses that they're also working on. And so we'll continue to do that with IVOG. I know that we're still working on the supervision and management of two plus two. And we'll just inch along and, you know, do what we can to ensure that students actually have a pathway to University of Guam. But we also have other pathways for students to consider. There was a recruitment effort earlier this week for Bellevue University, which is a two plus two. And then we also have the finalized Chaminade University for the two plus two also in other programs as well. So we're going to continue to do that so that the students have access to continuing on their four-year program. And that's all I have for now. Other than we're preparing for our budget hearing, which will be scheduled for April nineteenth. And so the board chair.
That's Tuesday, right?
It's a Tuesday, yes. Board chair and I will be representing the college at that hearing. That's all I have, but I can move on to capital projects, capital improvement projects. So we're continuing to do the air conditioning replacement here on campus. There is a new school of work that is going out for additional units in building three thousand. Primarily in building three thousand to change out those. The building two hundred, two thousand emergency generator has already been awarded. And that gives progressing underground water leak detection. They did the initial assessment and so we're continuing to work on that. Because we want to make sure that there's no water leakage here on campus, and so we're just doing that detection.
How old is that pipe and how large is that pipe? Is it like twelve inches, twelve inch pipe?
I don't know what the size is.
Felonized probably.
Yeah, so. And then we're continuing to monitor the building six thousand, this building water pump. The student canopy will be added to the construction projects on the next meeting. Because that is now headed out to bid. And the barrel bolt, we will probably issue the barrel bolt that connects building five thousand to buildings eight. Out again because we, it had exceeded the budget that we had anticipated for that project. And then we're also looking at some other canopies here on campus. Refurbishment of building nine hundred will probably have a broader scope and will be put out to bid again. We're still working on the thirty thousand gallon water tank. And the next completion date with the extension that was granted is May sixth. The design for the culinary and bakery center for building four hundred is currently at the thirty percent drawing with TRMA. And so once that A and E is done, then we will also add that to the list of construction projects on under unfinished business. As the, as well as the bathroom renovations for building two thousand.
Probably the new facility in another, we're offering with the baking and stuff. But we haven't done any apprenticeships with the local providers?
With the hotels.
And the, I'm talking more small business. I know the hotels, right? They have qualifying certificates, so they don't really do the apprenticeships, right? At least for our locals, right? Just going to call me there, is that something we can look at?
I can check to see if we have any currently. But you can have our apprenticeship office to reach out to them.
Bootcamp and being an apprenticeship down the line.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so the baking right now, the baking and the culinary are finishing up their. The one-year free college initiative that was funded by Department of Interior. So the baking piece was a track that was added. And they should be finishing up sometime in August, I believe.
Can I see just the architectural layout for the?
Oh, sure. Yeah, we're only at thirty percent right now on the design. And so the architects will come to be helpful about that.
Nice.
And then I'll speak about the construction, major construction projects when we get to unfinished business.
Thank you. When the committee report starts.
So good afternoon, everyone. So my report for March eighth, twenty twenty-two, summer fall twenty twenty-two registration is currently ongoing. And then spring break is next week, starts next week for my day. And after we get back from spring break, I think it's college assembly and then we just have one. It seems like it'll be our last week of classes, right? The Fall Edge Student Conference was held on Friday, March eighteen, from eight-thirty to twelve-thirty. Total participants or attendees for that conference was ninety-nine students. Forty students were face-to-face and fifty-nine were virtual online. So it was a really good conference. After speaking to some of the students, a lot of their interest was in finance. So that finance pieces are really good workshop for them, yeah, so.
Out of the students that showed up, were they comfortable, were they?
Yes, very much, yeah. They were happy to actually have attended it. Because we didn't, we didn't have a conference, this was our first out-to-back again after so long. So, yeah, so it was a good number. And then we had a good number of participants also for this conference. Twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, student election, leader elections, work ethic was held this week. Online meeting, so we'll have new elected officers to be announced in the upcoming weeks. Linkup Reverse job there showcasing all graduates in the fall twenty twenty-one, spring twenty twenty-two semester. That'll be held on April twenty, starting at nine in Obi-Wan in the MPA. So this would be a good opportunity for students that are graduating to meet with employers for job searching this weekend. Spring twenty twenty-two, last day of classes, Friday classes, last day is April twenty-second. Saturday classes are, is on April twenty-third. Tuesday, Thursday classes, last day is on the twenty-sixth. And then Monday, Wednesday would be on May second. Let me see. I felt to mention in the past meetings that I attended the bootcamp ceremonies in January and February. And the highlights of hearing the testimonies of some of the top students in these cohorts were very impressive, you know? Just the workforce development coordinators were very instrumental in seeing their success through the programs. So I'd like to, you know, great job to our workforce development team, you know, for making.
You should have seen when the family members were attending pre-COVID. I mean, you see people crying and very emotional like some of the stories, yeah, agree. Is this, is this your last meeting as a student trustee, or do you have another meeting after this?
Actually, this. This will be my last general membership meeting with the board, yes. So you'll have your new trustee next month, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, you talked about elections, so.
How many people ran for the student trustee?
Just one. There was only one. And you know, it was funny because he said, Paris, you just said. How bar, you know, and like, you know, it's a great opportunity. I really, I mean, I was really recruiting for this position. Because, you know, it's a great opportunity for students to really be a part of it going on. So there was just one, so. I think the election and the recruitment was, it was just a short period, so, yeah.
Well, we appreciate your service here on the board, thank you.
Thank you so much, Paris. You're really a great.
Yes, and I just want to thank you, Dr. Pala, also for, you know, just supporting students and always just, you know, being open to hearing. You know, what our concerns are.
Please pass along to the new trustee, the reports department that you use. Because I tell you, that's very good to get in advance.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Will do.
Thank you.
And then our next, our next class of general membership meeting is today, actually, of that talk. Followed by Zumba Recreation Event. So Guam Fitness Instructors and our adult high program, Yolanda Tepasnia is going to lead us in our Zumba activity today. Yes. And then the Guam Capable organization is also partnering with Guam Fitness. They're both instructors for the Guam Fitness Instructors. So Guam Capable is actually going to do a little demonstration today for our students, so, yeah, that's a good.
Where are you guys going?
It's going to be in our center courtyard today, yes.
Are you good?
Yes, yeah.
Good is good, good is good.
And we're the first, we're the first college faculty to, or, you know, organization to, to be able to have them on, yeah.
Yeah, push well, that's a, that's a nice thing.
Yes, yeah. So excited about that. That's happening too. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, who we have next? Simone?
Yes, so just to add to what I said about spring break coming up. Everybody's hoping they'll get some, you know, the weather will pass, we'll get some sunny days. And then right after that release, the last push at the end of the semester. Get all the students to submit everything that they need to, finish on projects, grade everything. And then naturally, looking forward to graduation. We have been hearing from students about their plans with the motorcade, you know? We've had trolleys in the past, we've had stretch limo or the, you know. And so I think that the excitement of that is starting to.
Build.
Yeah, to, you know, students are talking about it, sharing with their instructors and just.
What day is graduation? Thirteen, yeah.
And that's pretty much it. It's just, you know, I mean, just the month.
Yeah, working on accreditation also, right?
And we attended, I attended last week the training, Iser training.
Iser.
It was good, getting us again, you know, focused. I mean, it's nice because in a sense, it never feels like it's totally gone. It's not something completely new. I worked on, I was chair for one of the standard committees last time. And so it really, you know, feel, I mean, everything just lines up nicely, so to continue that work.
Well, the board has confidence in this organization. It's good to hear that you have the spirit of that. Thank you. Mr. Ken?
Yeah, so now we're pretty much preparing for the end of the spring semesters and upcoming graduations. We're also working with, or setting up the summer and fall restriction, which is already on the, online. And we have colleges coming up on the E.T. And as Mary had mentioned, we have the online corporate training for employees.
Very good.
That's pretty good and that's pretty much all.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, next up, board trustees, community outreach report. Ms. Rose?
On March twenty-four, I attended the, as part of the nursing and allied health advisory board meeting. Great that we were able to reconvene the meeting and have an update from D and D. And able to meet the faculty and I know there's still challenges of hiring a faculty and a chance for that department. So I know that they've been working and getting, seeking some advice in how are they be able to push the program. And so we kind of like reconvene the meeting and anything helps. Follow us that need to update with the advisory board. And we look forward and really re-bumping and looking and pushing and having that focus in that program the next semester. So with that, okay. Aside from that, I just leave one note from the board that we have. We do have a lot of exam meds, clinic equipments that is interested for donation. Even filing folders that we're trying to clear out our house.
Who's with?
F H P.
F H P.
So you can connect with anyone, patient charge holders that has a pacemaker. Because we're fully integrated now into EMR system. So if you guys are interested, we have a lot.
Okay, we'll reach out to the departments and our students.
We can send a picture, I will send a picture to Berza.
Okay.
And what are those, some of that, because we're really clearing out our. And then I'll reach out to D if there's anything that our laboratory needed, supplies, especially for. And some of the instruments and tools, but I do have a lot of exam meds.
Okay, and we'll check and see what we need in our student health service center.
Yeah.
Any other report? I think she attended the Red Ball, right? So look out on the news.
That's not on the record.
That's actually outreach, right?
No, I attended in the red, I thought you were going to say that. I made it in the best dress, please.
And she made it in the best dress.
As part of the board of American Red Cross, I attended the Red Ball with the first time attending event. So it's nice to start to have those events.
You know, I also understand that G and A is looking for, do you mind just updating us?
So this year, you know, May is the nurses month. And this year, we're doing a seven awards category. And one of the awards is School of Allied Health and Nursing. So I really, I reach out, we reach out to GCC if you can, any of your faculty. Or from the allied health program that you want to have to nominate for that category.
The winner's a castle, right?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah. So one of your faculty before Barbara Montes is actually one that we are doing that twenty fourteen.
Remember that.
And then, yeah, we do have. So I really hope that we're excited for this year's celebration.
Yeah, those of you who don't know, she's the president of Guam Nurses Association.
In many years, first president. Six years, now I'm the executive director.
Executive director.
Yeah, our new president is Elizabeth Sun.
Okay. Yeah, just asking if they can send the Dr. Pala formal request? Let's get to some of her.
Pilar, I think is the one to reach out.
Okay, oh, very good. Very good, okay. Trustee Harris, you have a control of the report.
No, this time.
Okay, so I also attended the online call with the Iser for accreditation. I tell you, it was very informative, I learned a lot during that thing. We, we went to attend the GLI, that's the Governance Leadership Institute's. Chair, vice chair and president, CEO training. And it was very good, very small group, a lot of group work. And we just continued to hear the three-letter acronym, diversity.
Equity.
Equity and inclusion, yes. So that's the new administration's focus. And so we're just a lot of opportunities for grants and other things there. Good thing is, we shared it earlier, you know, a lot of people are trying to catch up to our region and Guam Community College. You know, when we talk about, you know, all those three items. So we're very proud. We didn't have any issues like some of the other community colleges there. I mean, we're looking at each other saying, wow, this must be difficult when the board and the president doesn't get along. So it's very good, yeah. And we also, we also took a trip to Washington DC, which is just a two-day. And we met with USD ARD, they encouraged Mary to turn in projects. Yeah, and so very, very productive. And we talked about some of the projects we had coming through that we're planning. And that we're hopefully going to approve the architectural engineering plans and they're just submitting them. So it's a, it's a good time for, for us. And that's all I have to report. Unfinished business.
Construction project updates started with the forensic lab. Forensic lab is now at ninety-eight point oh eight percent complete.
It looks done.
We're almost there, we're almost there. They've raised some of the applications for land management, EPA, GPT, and GBD away. We're just starting to schedule for their inspections.
Did you guys do the punch list already, finish that?
I did. For building three hundred.
Oh, before you be, before you finish, when are we planning a ceremony?
Not sure yet.
Is that something we're going to do with G P B or is this something that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. G P B, I'm thinking probably towards the beginning of the semester. Because we stopped waiting for all the equipment to arrive for the G P B site. I think all of our, I mean, all of our classroom furniture is already here.
Oh, good.
To storage. So, okay, so, yeah, so we'll, we'll let you know way in advance before we do the rapid cutting on that. On building three hundred, it's also reaching a lot, we have ninety-seven now percent complete. And they, we did, they did receive the metal canopy, so they're going to start putting that together. And just finishing off on the fire alarm system, the ground pole. Because that's going to be getting forward the fire alarm and fire screen for inspection in order to pass the G M P inspection. So that's at ninety-seven percent, so we have about three percent more on that project. The wellness center is still pending. Building B, notice of intent to award was already provided to a contractor. And with your authorization this afternoon on additional funding, the gap funding needed to fully execute that contract. We will be real close to issuing the notice of award for them. And then the Workforce Development Center, the latest is, I got some feedback from E D A. And they requested for some updated documents. So once that information is given to them, they estimate about thirty days before the official grant award. And so that should be coming out.
Busy. Okay, new business.
So the first item here is the five-year academic calendar. There is a calendar committee that codes the five-year academic calendar. That has been reviewed by faculty senate and through the college governing council. And so this is being presented to you for academic year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Through academic year twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven. And so this requires board action. I move.
Well, before we do that, any major changes? From, did you update anything that?
No, I think there was a proposal somewhere early on to put a break in the fall semester and that was taken out.
Start with the interruption.
No worries, no.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the calendar five-year as presented.
Thank you. You got a second, okay. If we don't have the objections, motion approved. Forward with the request to provide additional funding for building B renovation project.
Okay, so the building B renovation project, the college issued out a bid. And we had determined the most responsive. The lowest, most responsible based bid for that bid award. Our bid number twenty-two zero zero two for building B renovation came in at six million three hundred eighteen thousand four hundred ninety-seven. Through the Office of the Governor, we did receive funding for the building B renovation of three million six hundred sixty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-five. And so even though the difference is less than three million, just to include some additional contingency. So that we don't have to come back if we need additional funding. We are requesting the board to authorize three million dollars from the capital projects fund for the building B renovation project.
And this is truly a renovation, right? Existing building, no more talk of the major.
So it's a first floor right now. It will be renovated, first floor. And we will bring counselors back to the front of the campus. So counseling and academic testing, the placement testing will occur there. The faculty senate office will also be. The Faculty Senate office will also be located in there and the Student Support Services Group plus the Mass Notification System and the Security Guard. That's first floor. And now the second floor, we will be moving the lab that is currently in Building E, the student open lab, onto the second floor of that facility. So it will now be a two-story facility up front of the campus.
Okay, so it's a footprint of Building B then?
That's correct.
The second floor is, okay.
That's correct.
Very good.
Move to approve, move to approve.
Okay, a second.
Okay, I guess we know objections, so we approve the Resolution Twenty-two dash two zero two-two. Thank you. Okay, busy day today. Vice President Emeritus.
Okay, so the college, I received an application for Vice President Emeritus from Dr. Ray Samara requesting to be granted Vice President Emeritus status for the Long Community College in alignment with Policy Four-Sixty-Five, whereby it indicates that the nomination is approved by the supervisor. And so prior to his retirement, I was a supervisor, and so I received this. It is a self-nomination for this status. And a copy of his resume and his accomplishment during his career at G C C is attached for your, is attached to the board packet. In addition, the application for the Emeritus status is also here and the guidelines. And so for administrators, the criteria for eligibility is retirement from the college in a minimum of ten years of professional service at the college, which Dr. Samara has met.
Yes.
And that all supporting documentation that includes a resume and a statement outlining accomplishments during your career at college be submitted as well and submitted to the supervisor, which I received. And so this needs to be forwarded to the Board of Trustees for their final approval.
Okay, has it, has it gone through the governance process already?
So the current, the current policy and the procedures outlined here does has not, or does not indicate for any Emeritus status applications to go through the governance process.
Could we ask for it to go through the process? Is there something we can?
We can present it to the Faculty Senate and present it through the College Governing Council and then bring it back to the board.
So, yeah. Do you guys have any objections to that?
Yeah, that would be, at least you're part of the process.
Okay, do we need to make a motion?
We can just table it until the next meeting and we'll send it through.
Yeah. It seems like he has, he's compliant, Dr. Samara's compliant with all the written requirements for this, if he wants to go through this process.
Okay.
Do we need to?
We need to just table it for the next.
Okay, we don't need the motion already, can we do?
Motion to table.
Okay.
Motion to table on the application and with the recommendation to go to the Governance Committee.
Okay, second.
And then based on that, the college will consider revising the Policy Four-Sixty-Five to include a route through the governance process.
Good.
It doesn't currently have that, but if that's the board's wish, then we can put that. We're doing policy review updates now, so we can include that as part of the review.
I think it's put into, placed in part of the process.
Well, yeah, that's good. But I also like the fact that it's really the discretion of the president if this is approved as far as what the duties are. We wanna make sure we don't, you know, yes, acknowledge this, but also we wanna make sure that the college functions properly.
Okay.
Okay, no objection, the, the request for President Emeritus.
President Emeritus.
Is, has been tabled for governance process.
Okay.
All right. President Travel, no, no, we have the twenty-twenty-two A C C T G L I for Pacific Island Post-Secondary Education this June.
Yeah, so this is really information for the board. And if board members are to be, are to attend this, that will, it has, provides opportunities for board members to attend. The A C C T G L I is specifically for Pacific Island, Pacific Post-Secondary Education Council members. There are two A C C T G L I trainings happening. The front end of it is open to those colleges in the Western Pacific. Uh, no, I'm sorry, in the California Community Colleges and including Washington and Oregon. And then the second G L I, which is June nineteen to twenty-two, are for the Hawaii Community Colleges, G C C U O G, Northern Marianas, American Saba La, College of Micronesia, the Calgary States, College of the Marshall Islands in Palau. So it's a P D E C consortium, so that will take place on June nineteen to twenty-two. There will be some part of it that is funded by the P D E C. We don't know that yet until the P D E C meets.
Okay.
But there will be a portion of it that is going to be reimbursed to each entity for that training. So we just need to know how many board members are interested so that we can prepare the travel.
What is the deadline for the interest being submitted?
I don't think there's a deadline up there.
I think the registration is open now.
Yeah, the registration is open now.
Yeah.
If you, if you have some interest, just let us know so that we can at least register.
Trustee Harrow, you said in the, in Monlulu?
Let me see, I'm not really clear as to, what's this again on the, for June?
Yeah, so this is for June and the topics that were provided to A C C T for training, the role of the leadership of the board, succession planning for the board, accreditation.
I see, I got it.
Yeah.
This is June nineteen to the twenty-second.
Twenty-second, yes.
Uh, Monlulu, I think I've got that.
Okay, very good.
Make that my birthday present.
Oh, fantastic.
Okay, so trustee Harrow and trustee Greer?
I have a travel plan, so probably what we can do is just do the side trip.
Connected, okay.
On the way back.
Okay, that's fine.
There are just changes on my ticket, which are already filed.
Okay, so we can, we can just have Berza, trustee Greer, work on that. And then we'll reach out to trustee El Dorado and trustee Saba La to see if Mr. Cherry is allowed to.
Yeah, just, yeah, I'm right now on fifty-fifty on the, on the.
Okay. And so you just need to approve all trustees that are interested in attending so that the board has authorized for us to prepare your travel.
We need to do that now?
Yeah.
Okay, can I get a motion?
So.
To approve.
To approve.
Trustees interested in.
Trustees interested in.
G L I.
Yes.
Okay, give me a second.
Second.
Okay, no objections, motion approved. Let's move forward with the.
Before that, we need to reach out to, reach out to our last.
Yes, I, we will.
Okay. Okay, President Travel request.
Okay, so this is, I have a quite busy schedule coming up. So based on our meeting to, in Washington, D.C., there is an opportunity for convening of community college presidents. And there's some board members that are also being invited by A A C C to participate in a summit. And so we received a, during our visit, we received an invite from A A C C, but then I got a separate invite. I have not yet confirmed if it's the same invite from NAPEC. NAPEC is the Organization for Asian and Pacific Islanders Council. And so they're covering the cost of that travel, which is actually seventeen and eighteen in Washington, D.C., that summit. So that's the first one. The second one is the regular V C C J C Commission meeting that will take place May thirty-first through June third in Orange County. And that's to review all the accreditation reports and determine the status of all those coming through for accreditation. That's a regular meeting. Of course, the A C C T G L I for the nineteenth to the twenty-second, followed by the P D E C meeting on the last day. And then to dovetail with that, there is a board meeting in Las Vegas for West Care. And so all of these are currently funded by external sources.
Very good. Could we get a motion to approve the President's travel schedule, May through June twenty-twenty-two?
So.
Second.
Okay, second. Okay, if we have no objections, the motion passed. Okay, check in the session.